Yeah, I have a big packet. I haven't looked at yet, but it has the timelines and if I can get to you on that.
It seems like August, September, but I don't know.
So this year? This year?
I can't answer that. I don't want.
I'm not sure.
I mean, we have a packet.
Jean and I talked about it.
Yeah. Do you remember making getting that? It's like this big.
Yeah, yeah.
I have looked at that, but I don't know the date, but certainly we can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
That is a good project, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be commissioned to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call, Julie.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Action, Kathleen.
Yeah, so there is action. We are approving a request for leave without pay for two employees from Job and Family Services.
I'll second.
Roll call, Julie.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to Gina. And Gina.
Yes.
Okay, Joanne.
We're just moving right along.
We're talking, man.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I had a few things I wanted to be able to talk over with you folks. First thing that I have on my list is the NOPEC 2019 community events sponsorship program. This is the amount of money seventeen hundred and fifty dollars that they give every year and you guys need to pick or decide where you want to use that money.
Where have we put it in the past, just to give us?
This was new last year and I think we missed maybe.
I was gonna say, I don't remember.
I think, you know, it was discussion, but I don't think anything ever got resolved, so.
So we missed getting the money?
Yeah, 'cause it's a, it's a one time every year that they give.
It's not. Yeah, yeah.
'Cause I thought, once about a time, we thought about doing like one of the township, sponsoring township meetings or donating money towards that as a community or whatever. Is this something to?
Something.
It has to be community.
Community related, like for Ritz Town, we get the money and we put it towards the, um, um, the parade and, you know, setting, you know, taking flowers to the cemetery, something that impacts the whole community.
Okay. Right.
Oh, whole community, I think.
Right, and I know at one time, I think somebody mentioned the Ravenna balloon fair, but then that's kinda centralized to Ravenna.
So we have to be so careful with that.
So you'd like, you know, you wanna try to see where you can hit everybody.
Oh, how about celebrate portage?
Ooh.
That is the perfect event.
Is that something coming up?
Yeah, and the end of August, and they're gonna be having the dinner, they have the big car show.
Yes, yes.
That would be something ideal.
I can go ahead and contact Charlie at NOPEC and tell him that that's the idea. I'm sure it will probably pass. I don't know.
If you contact Todd Peets, he can give you a list of all of our events.
Things that they're gonna do.
Yeah, to see if they qua- any of them qualify for it.
And then that way, if, I don't know that we have to provide them anything other than maybe what you wanna do to get the money. This is the first year, in Ritz Town, I think we had them give the money directly to, I'm not sure, so.
'Cause they have like this big awards dinner where they, they highlight people within the community, local heroes and stuff, that we could probably sponsor.
They did, right. That would be a good one then, if it hits every, all, you know, whole county, so, okay. I'll check that out with Charlie and get back to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Would the other op- would another option be however we are, have our presence at the fair? I don't know what you guys have done typically for the fair.
You guys, um.
But we don't do anything. I mean, we.
Well, you, some of your departments have booths there, but those departments set them up themselves as far as I know, like.
Yeah.
Dog warden.
The auditor will do something, the dog warden, Solid Waste does something, Job and Family, I think they have things in, in like the, the tents.
Prosecutor.
But the commissioners on a whole, I don't think I, I would know of anything that you've ever done that way.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, you know.
What you would do.
Yeah.
Yeah, what would we do?
Unless you, well, I don't know, could you, they're still taking donations for the building that they're wanting to put up there, correct?
Oh, oh, that's right.
That, you know, the big arena or whatever?
Yes. Yes.
I mean, would that, I don't know if that would qualify. You want me to ask about that question too?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that, that would be everything for, you know, our county, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that, that would be a good one too, seeing which one he thinks needs countywide and.
So then my next favorite topic is the former county engineer's property on Cleveland Road. Oh, it's a bit, will always be here. I think that's.
Even though it's a long transfer, it's still our problem.
Yeah. Yes, so, once we did the initial tier one investigation, um, the state fire marshal came back with additional information that they wanted that we need to provide for them.
Of course.
We don't have a choice in the matter. Um, it's a ten thousand dollar, eight hundred and eighty-three dollar, um, ticket. Once that is done and they will review things, they will then let us know, I'm sure, if there's going to be any remediation stuff that's gonna have to be done. Now, I know that when we took that, the old train that was buried underground and all that stuff out, we remediated everything then, but I don't know, you know, something evidently they didn't like in the report that came back when they did some subsurface things. So, I'd like to go ahead and work with Todd, get the money put in and get that going, so that we hopefully maybe get this off our.
The sooner the better.
Checklist.
Yes, and it's not like it's an option, we have to do it.
Right, that's why I said, we don't have a choice, and I'm just praying that this next thing that comes through will be. All right.
The end.
Yes. Okay, so number three is the USDA RPC lease. And this is, it's such a strange thing. I called the UPF, UPS, the USDA gentleman and said, you know, if you're going to move in our building, if you would send me your lease, I can let it through our prosecutor's office and see what they, you know, like, well. That would take me two years to do, and I'm like.
What?
I know, two year, you know, I was like stupefied, right? And he said, well, he said, you know, I, that, that just isn't, you know, gonna work. So, then I think.
They have, they have a lease, right?
Well, they have a lease, the regional planning entered into it with them.
With regional planning.
Okay.
So he said that he was just going to go back to Todd Peets and talk to him about that lease. Well, Todd's idea is maybe we could enter into an MOU between the Board of Commissioners and Regional Planning to let that lease come down here as is, and then somehow, when the rent is collected, they will turn it over to us. Well, when I read, when I looked at the lease, which is several pages long, I thought, well, you know what? Before, I would recommend to you folks that we do that, I want the prosecutor, because the prosecutor didn't review this for regional planning. But I wanted to, I wanted Chris to say, everything that they stayed in here, if we're responsible to do for them, if they could come back to us and say, you know what, you don't have enough lighting here or something, you know, I wanna know that ahead of time, because that might not be worth it. And since they haven't sold the building yet, the person, you know, obviously can still stay there, so. I wanted to let you know where we are, so that I can get back, and I will get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Okay, now my next favorite topic is the motor pool. Well, I've, we finally got the.
Inventory done.
Inventory done in the reports in a binder this thick. And I am, luckily, um, they also gave me their Excel sheets, so that I could, I could sort them by manufacturer names and things like that, because I'm looking for some, I'm looking for some specific things.
To help be okay. Right.
I had Joe's inventory that he had done before, you know, the last one, so now my goal is to compare the two, to see where we're at. I don't, I can't give you really a timeline, because I kinda fit it in when there's not something else that's going. But, um, once I get a good feel for things, I will come back and report to you what, what, what I think we should do next. And I know that Joe has a few, they have a few things that they'd like to still get out of there, but I also heard from a gentleman that had a piece of equipment that I think was an oil vat or container, something that's still in the motor pool that's theirs, and I said, you know, well, I need to, I need some identifying idea of what that is, you know, so, we're working towards getting that cleaned up. The second item on this has to do with the chin allotment. And Water Resources had asked, they said that their, their consultant was looking for an area for, to put in a, a sanitary lift station in the Ravenna town, uh, township area there that will work with the chin project. Well, they identified the motor pool as, um,
Potential.
A potential site, because it's, and I can show you. Here's our motor pool, and there's where they're thinking, you know, that everything could go right there. It would be kind of, you know, probably something, um, I think that would maybe work smoothly for them or whatever. So, he's saying, David Sloan from Water is saying that they need like fifty by fifty feet, which we could potentially have there, obviously, in the area where, next to the motor pool that they had parked cars and so forth in.
Parked cars.
But, does that detract from one of them wanting to sell that building?
What will happen after this chin allotment is done? I mean, will that lift station still?
It will always have to be there.
It will always have to be there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that is going to.
Right. So, is it better for us in the long run to keep that property? And eventually, when we get rid of whatever's in that building, that, you know, all of the equipment, everything, and then tear that down, so that Water Resources then has anything extra that they might need? I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know their business that well to know if there'd be some kind of thing that would be expansion there or whatever. But, um, they had asked me about, you know, an update, and I said, well, I wanted to talk it over with you guys to see what you felt, I mean.
Yeah, 'cause what about the tanks? We gotta get those out.
Well, the tanks, they're always gonna have to come out.
Come out no matter what.
And I know that one of the things he said was, is we can't have, you know, the lift station can't be too near the, the tanks, but.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
And that's why I said so, I mean, it doesn't matter, we're gonna have to clean that up too.
Right, you know, Joanne, I think we need to talk to Jean to see what, what else could fit in there.
Okay. Yeah, if they, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna short side the, the site for potential sale to someone.
Right.
Exactly.
But if our people would need it, you know, we already own it, and it makes sense to me, I mean, we'd wanna keep it.
Right. Right. Do you think we would eventually dem- demolish the, the actual structure, 'cause it's in such bad shape there?
I wouldn't put any more money into that building.
Just. That's what I'm thinking.
Um, it's got several, it's got several, you know, issues going on.
At the roof. Because we should be able to get grant money, I would think, to help with the tanks and.
But I also. Well, that's what I'm, you know, so.
What if the land bank did anything with that?
I don't know. But that's why I wanted to bring it up, since Water, you know, expressed an interest, and I knew that this, the chin thing was coming sooner or later, and if that helps them save money from having to reroute that lift station somewhere else or put it somewhere else.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we should talk to Jean.
Have it, yeah, okay.
Because where else would we put it at?
The lift station? See, I don't know.
They'd have to buy some land or something if they can't put it, yeah.
You know, that's why I'm sure they, you know, when their consultants brought that out, it was like, oh geez, you know, what do you even think about this, so.
Yeah, well, maybe we have Jean come in and talk to us then, Vicky said.
All right. Well, then my next topic would be the annex building, which is the one over here, that used to be the old nurses home, that J- um, Job and Family Services, Children's Services are in. Now, there had been talk before about, we should get, you know, we should take that building out, make it a parking lot, whatever. But I have a few things. First of all, if you did that, I don't know where Kelly Jo would put her folks, because they're still over there. I know she's gonna be moving, I think some of those people may be over to the third floor, but I'm not sure who. We do, you know, I mean, we did put money into windows and roofing there, but my next things that are failing is the air conditioning and the heat. Which I wanna be able to take care of before we get into the heating season, if we're going to keep that building.
Do you know what, about what that would cost, just a ballpark?
I don't, we didn't even, well, no, we didn't even, because I, part of me wants to see if we can't, because it's not a huge building like this. If we can't combine, we don't need to have a boiler and air conditioning separate, we can combine into one, which would save us money in the long run. But I don't have any figure on that yet, because I didn't wanna waste time getting any of that, if we thought this is really on the, on the ticker to maybe take down. So I kinda wanted to hear what you guys had to say about keeping it or like the.
Well, since Kelly is, is still using it and we have put money in it.
I think we're gonna have to, because until we, and we don't really wanna buy anything else.
It's a brick, it's a brick solid building, and, you know, and unfortunately, it's just.
It looks, it has a nice curb appeal. Actually, it looks like the newest part of our building, but.
And I think the issues have just been, and she's been, they've been so crammed in there that it makes it hard when you go in there and look at things, that, oh my gosh, these people are sitting on top of each other.
Yeah, it does.
And I think once it would, could open up to a, um, you know, a regular working, plus we have, you know, we paid to have that external.
That's what I was gonna ask you, do we ever get the handicap tickets?
Elevators, that, you know, we paid to have that done when the prosecutor are still in there, so, I mean, we put money into that building, I paid there, I think, see it go, since it's solid.
Right. And since we have the potential to alleviate some of the overcrowding there by putting them on the third floor.
So if you're, if you're inclined to keep, then we'll go, we'll proceed on getting some quotes on what we need to do to, um, get that fixed up before winter, before winter strikes. Likewise, we'll be getting from NOPEC another fifty-seven thousand dollars this year. You know, the la- last year's fifty-seven thousand, I rolled over because our roofing project wasn't finished yet. So we're gonna get another fifty-seven this year and another fifty-seven next year, if everything holds through from NOPEC. I would think maybe we can put the money that could come from that into this air conditioning and heating.
'Cause when are we gonna use that for the roof of the motor pool, the?
The first one?
Yeah.
It's the roofs that we did here this year.
Oh, okay.
I rolled it over, because last year we, it got too dicey to think that we could get it done before winter was gonna set in. So I just rolled it to this year, so that we would have it to spend. And if that's okay, then I'll start looking into those things for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the great things about, they're giving those, I guess they call them grants.
Community grants.
Yeah. Okay, so my last item is a justice center maintenance person. So we received the temporary occupancy on the new pod. Our building department and the fire folks and everybody went out there and Randy issued a temporary occupancy. And I've been working with the sheriff's office to say, okay, when are we going to move the hundred gentlemen that we have in a couple of the old pods to the new, so that we can start renovating the old, and they're, they haven't quite gotten me a date yet, because they're looking for some additional training to come up with their corrections officers. But my concern is, is that now we're going to be adding another hundred and thirty some beds. And our guys are pushed to the limit right now with going out there all the time, and we've got a couple gentlemen, ob- obviously, um, that, you know, cut into everything else we do, plus we've been asked a lot, a lot lately to help Job and Family Services, because their gentleman goes on vacation or he's gone, and then when he's gone, they ask us to go over and do the cleaning and picking up the trash and things like that. So, part of my, our angst a lot of times is the fact that the sheriff's office will call in the middle of the night and say, we have a leak and it's an emergency, and then we call, some, one of the guys will go out there, and when they get there, it's not necessarily a floodgate or anything like that, it's something they could have waited till morning hours or whatever. So, our idea was, is that somewhere or another, there's gonna have to be another body. Another body to help take care of that place, because our guys spend mornings generally there, because they've had toilet plugs and things like that all over.
And that's always going to be, Joanne.
It is, the nature of the beast out there, um, they, they'll flush sheets, they'll flush blankets, they flush their.
Pop cans.
Their potato chip bags, whatever they buy from the commissary, just to kind of, and when they do, you know. So my idea is, is that, and the sheriff, I, well, I don't know, I didn't have a talk to him yet, because I wanted to talk to you folks first, is I, I'd like to see the sheriff hire a maintenance person that could at least take care of the toilet clogs and change the light bulbs, those kind of things. Our guys are always gonna have to be involved with the HVAC side of things, because it's all connected to the system that controls the HVAC and all our other things. So, I mean, we're not walking away totally, but I think someone that they could call in, that's their employee.
I agree.
Would be beneficial all the way around.
I agree. What happened to the maintenance person they used to have years ago? Did they just be tired, quit, and was never replaced, or?
Well, when, ironically, when we, right after we built the, um, the, the new jail, there were two maintenance people from here that went out there. It was Doug Caraffa and Jake Osteich, I think was his last name. But, the problem there was, it was a new building, and there wasn't enough to keep them going.
Enough work.
Jake was older, he retired, and then, um, when Doug retired, we said, you know what, it might be easier at this point. We'll just pull everybody here, and when we need to pull people out there, we'll send people out there.
Different situation, yes.
Um, Ron Nelson was the next person who was out there doing things or whatever, and now all of our guys, you know, it's like, everybody go, so that you know what, you know, what you're doing. One of the nice things about Granger, the construction team that we're using, is, is that as all these new systems went in, we had, our guys were there being trained, and they had asked for a sheriff's person to go as well, and I'm not sure who the sheriff sends. But they also filmed everything, so, we have that on DVD films, whatever, so that the next people coming in could see how those things are taken care of or whatever. But I just feel like it would be better off, we'd be better off, if the sheriff had somebody there that they could work, maybe, and it, maybe daytime isn't the best time, maybe that person should work in the evenings or something, when things are less quiet or less hap- you know, I don't know. But I just wanted to run that through, run that by you guys, because eventually, what, staff that we have isn't gonna be able to maintain. We'd either have to hire somebody, or to me, it kinda makes sense to let the sheriff have this person in control of.
I think so, yes.
I agree.
Can I ask, so they're to do repairs and, 'cause they have the inmates do the cleaning, right?
The inmates do cleaning. Our, our guys have never done that. Our guys do, they change light bulbs, they fix the toilets, they'll unclog sinks, they'll unclog drains, um.
And we think that's a full-time position, or would we split them with something else?
With, now with adding a hundred and thirty more beds and thir- hundred and thirty more people, which I, I agree, they're not in there yet, but I'm not so sure how fast they won't be. So, I, that's just that many more toilets and clogs and things with more people added, that's what I feel. And then, um, you know, they do their own snow plowing out there and their own, you know, they use Jake, and he uses trustees to do those kinds of things, yeah. But I don't think that they would let any trustee or anyone like that in the pipe chases or things like that, or with tools.
Repairs, right.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't know what you guys, if you wanna think about it, get back to me, I would, you know, then, or if you wanna talk to the sheriff about what he might think about that.
This is something that I have thought about and I have talked to the sheriff about.
Okay.
And he's very much in favor of having someone out there.
Yeah, I figured, because it's, you know, it's hard, because if our guys, let's say, for example, since they're spread between all the rest of our buildings, if they're working on tearing something apart, and then they've got an emergency going on, it's like, okay, we gotta put something back together here before we can go there, you know, it's just sometimes inconvenient, and I, you know, they're a twenty-four hour operation, and the rest of our buildings are not, but.
Joanne, what kind of cost are we looking at to bring someone in?
Well, I don't, I would, don't know what they would hire this person under. I don't think he fits in any of their union contract kind of thing, so I'm thinking he would be admin.
A woman one million.
Right, he would, right, he would be admin, so I'm not sure what they would feel would be a fair price. I mean, our guys make sixteen dollars an hour.
Well, I would think that we would use, you know, a job description and, yeah.
Whatever we have, whatever we do, yeah.
I think.
But this would be an add-on to the sheriff's budget?
Yes.
It would, it would be something that you would, you know, would have to give him.
So, so.
And that's why I said, it's either gonna, general fund is maintenance or general fund is sheriff.
Yeah, because it's the same thing, general fund's paying no matter.
Exactly.
Either one, and I'm just saying that for the ease of their operation, because we're sensitive to it, I mean, I get calls midnight from dispatch saying, you know, what are we gonna do? We don't have this, so we call someone out or whatever, so, I know. They have those issues that crop up. You've been, you've had, you've gotten the same calls before, you know, and she's calling, saying, what are we doing?
Oh, yes, yes. On the weekends.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Sunday.
So we probably need like a job description, and then, because, I mean, it's perfect timing for, for budgeting, but that's for next year. We, are you looking at to add this person possibly this year, you think, because, you know, the new pod's gonna be opening, or is this something that we add to his budget for next year?
I would, if it was me, I would say we would, we would do it for next year. This year, we're still going to have the same amount of inmates, just moved around. We're not expanding anymore, you know, we don't, I don't expect more trash at this point, because they're still, um, they're moving and we're renovating. Next year, when we have everything done, which I think is still scheduled maybe for February now, when everybody moves back, that's when they'll be able to take new incoming.
You know, that number's going down. You know what the, what the judges are doing or?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm like, I was stupefied when I started seeing the last, the last tallies that came through, because it's never been this low.
Yeah. I know.
You know, so, um, I'm not sure where the, where the.
That's really weird.
The cooperation's coming from.
And normally, in the summer, it goes up.
Well, over the Fourth of July, I was, I was astonished, 'cause I.
It was down below two hundred.
Yeah.
It still was.
It is, 'cause that was, that's usually a time when, you know, holiday weekends, when things perk up.
When people are off.
Yeah.
I think there's been a real increased effort by the court house, the judges, probation, the law enforcement.
The judges.
The judges.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right.
We've been communicating with those parties as well, and I think it's made a difference.
Right, yeah.
Well, and, and that's gonna really be helpful when we get to the part where we're doing the renovation, because those areas are, are bad, and well, once they get renovated, it will make so much difference, and because we're able to move people into the new, it should be perfect, so. But in my mind, I would think that next year, there should be enough time to get a person brought up to snuff, kind of, I mean, and our maintenance people aren't gonna walk away. They can work with a new person that the sheriff gets.
Right, right.
I mean, we would never do that, and we'll always be there for backup, I mean, that's, that's what we do.
Right. So probably what we need to do is, is get like the job description that you have.
I, we can pull those, I've got those.
Look at, see what the money is, it's gonna cost us to add. I mean, I'm not against adding it, but
What you look at?
Again, it's something we, we're gonna have to add a position.
But it's gonna be, I think, like our guys, part of the overtime, if they're coming in on Sunday and Saturday and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We have to pay them.
So on the general fund pays, no matter where the current is.
Do they get call out? I mean.
They get call out, if they're called out and they're only there an hour, they have, they get there four straight time, but not over.
They get. Okay.
Or if it's, um, at the end of a, a shift or in the, you know, towards the end of a shift, that is, then it's just regular overtime.
So I don't think the cost is gonna be that much more than what we pay now, I really don't.
It would be interesting if you could get us, like a history, of, to see how much it's costing.
Like overtime that we've done?
Yeah, just for the sheriff, just so that we have an idea.
And we have, we got job descriptions.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
So then what we tell the sheriff?
And then what's not on my list that I wanted to be able to respond back to you, was that NSP business that came from Bridget Social.
Right here, yeah.
I did contact, um, Regional Planning, and they had received that kind of grant in the past. But, um, Lisa said that total, everything that she wrote in there was exactly right, it was money that, and everything that was sent. So that is up, you know, if you guys want to enter into an agreement for them, since the last agreement was two thousand and nine, we probably should have an updated one. It's perfectly in line, it doesn't, it doesn't cross over the CDBG's business that they do in regional.
She's talking about this, I just got this on my desk this morning, so, uh, Bridget is wanting to meet with us if we want her to, um, I don't think we need to, but I mean, I don't mind if she comes in.
Is that the NSP funds that, that they're coming, yeah, they had a, they had round one and round two.
The city of Kent had the money, and they used it.
They sold houses.
Now they've got, they've got the money regenerated and they wanna use it for something else in Kent, and as long as you guys are okay with that, we, I just think that, you know, and she mentioned an updated.
Right.
Contract.
Right.
And if you don't need to have her come in and explain anymore, you know, just send in the, the agreement, it's up to you guys. But that's what I did find out.
Thanks, Joanne.
Yep.
All right.
Anything for me?
Joanne.
Yes.
Could you?
Sabrina.
Could you come in?
Do you want her to come in? Add a little.
Doesn't matter, maybe real dope.
Maybe, maybe.
Our discussion.
I was gonna ask where we.
And I'm sorry, we didn't ask you that.
No, no, I, no, that's okay, I was gonna ask where we, we're kinda going with that, so, sure, no problem.
Okay.
What, what is, I'm sorry, I just. What, what is, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I just asked if she would come back for the eleven fifteen discussion.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay.
Alright. Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have anything on the consent agenda before, uh, before anything?
I didn't.
Yeah.
No?
Okay.
Let me look in here.
Okay, I gotta, I think I did have a couple.
I meant to say that before, is that, got it?
Oh, this is like a child, that's not you. Oh, you know what, I forgot to ask Kelly Jo, Jobs and Family Service, number seventeen, that participation agreement? I didn't see any cost associated with that, are you familiar with that, Joanne, number seventeen?
I saw that, is it in here?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's just a system, they, it says they use to basically.
The rest of, the agreement is with the CCAO that service corporation.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know that I recalled any amount in there, there wasn't any resolution, was there, Joanne?
No, there's none in there.
I think it was just the allow, allowing them to.
Participate in that program.
Participate. Yeah.
For locating services and stuff, so. Forgot to ask Kelly Jo, no. Okay. Yeah, I didn't see an amount in there. And then, let's see here, number seven. Joanne, you might know about this, cause it's a contract. Number seven at the prosecutor's office.
Is that for their grants?
Yeah, they, they had the calculations wrong, is that?
Oh, really?
They're number seven, no, it wasn't number seven, which one was it?
Yeah, that's prosecutor.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, number seven.
Yeah, they, they're amending it, right?
Yeah, but the calculations were wrong.
Oh, okay. Todd probably, maybe Todd was instrumental in getting them to fix it up, I'm gonna guess, since that would've gone through him.
Okay. I forgot all that I had. I didn't quite understand the participation agreement, other than it's that, to participate in that program, to have access to that database.
I asked, um, Kelly Jo if she had the prosecutor review that, and she said the original one was, the second one hadn't been, so she's, she did forward it to David, uh, Rhode, but we haven't heard anything back from him yet, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ninety percent sure, ninety-nine percent sure that it's probably fine, but we wouldn't process anything for you guys to sign, I don't think.
Unless it's John, there's not a problem.
Yeah. And she's aware.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Thanks, Joanne.
No problem.
Thank you.
See you in a bit.
Bye.
Do you wanna recess till public comment?
Yeah.